There we go.
Yeah, y'all are on.
Good afternoon, good afternoon.
So, I mean, while we're waiting with you, oh, you're good, you're good? Okay, um, we'll just start, introduce yourselves and, uh, y'all are running for city council, just start, just introduce yourselves.
Well, I'm Vivian McKenzie.
And speak into the mic, pull the mic to you, you can pull it to you.
Good.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Sorry. I'm Vivian McKenzie, I currently sit on the city council in Peekskill, I'm running for reelection. Um, I've been on the council for about a year and a half, I took over, um, someone's place, so I had a special election to come in and I'm happy to be here today.
Good. And my name is Andre Rainey and I'll be running, this is my first time running for, for this position as a city council for my city of Peekskill. I'm born and raised in Peekskill and, uh, I'm, I'm excited about it.
Alright, so I was trying to pull up, we did a story about y'all running.
Okay.
And, um, Andre Noodle Rainey.
Yes.
Everybody knows you as Noodle, thirty-one years old, Peekskill artist, local celebrity, popular, uh, positive and uplifting hip-hop sound. Um, you own your own entertainment company, New Moves Entertainment.
Yes.
Devoted your efforts to community, uh, providing youth opportunities, mentorship to young men and, uh, partnered with a lot of local businesses. And you are a father of two.
Father of one.
Father, I'm sorry, of a two-year-old, okay, there you go, there you go. Thank you for correcting me.
Oh, yeah.
And Vivian McKenzie owns, owner and proprietor of Kathleen's Tea Room. Uh, running for reelection, uh, to a four-year term, uh, member of two, of Peekskill's longest established families, the Bridgewater's and the Jamison's. You'll have to explain that to me in a minute.
Okay.
And, um, um, you are currently the only African-American serving on the Peekskill Common Council. Um, says you've taken interest in ensuring issues of inclusion and diversity are addressed in city hall, strong advocate for keeping taxes low, which is always a popular thing. I want property owners and, um, um, uh, skimming through, skimming through, we fight tirelessly against negative, uh, messages coming out of Peekskill City Hall. So, first, uh, Noodle.
Yes.
Um, so you are, I'm hearing you are an artist, or you have a record company or something and you've done some music and, um, you sometimes rap at some of these events and stuff?
Yeah, I do a little bit of everything, I actually started my entertainment company two thousand ten, that's when that started, but I, um, I've always been into music since I was a child.
Okay.
And, um, I've been able to use that, that music and, you know, as poetry as well as hip-hop into something positive, you know, we do a lot of events for children and with children.
Okay.
And even also for adults too, we do stuff all around, so, but to use it in a positive matters was been making a difference for me.
Okay, okay. And now, tell me about this longest established families, the Bridgewater's and the Jamison's, what's that about?
Well, Peekskill is, is a small town, um, and my family is one of the older African-American families that were there. Um, very well-known in the churches, um, very well-known for cooking, um, and just one of the strong families, like a lot of the African-American families that come from Peekskill.
Okay, now, I used to, um, write for The Source and I used to, um, one of the things I used to do to mix things up when I would talk to a group is instead of having them talk about each other, I'm, uh, it's themselves, I'm gonna have each one of y'all talk about the other one.
Oh, okay.
So, you start.
Okay, good.
Describe her.
Alright, well, she's, she's kinda one of the people that influenced me to, to making this step, you know, um, she, she does own a, a local business in Peekskill. And she showed me a little bit about the, uh, I guess that the business side of taking care of business as far as taxes and things go inside of Peekskill. So she, she's inspired me and of course she is a, you know, a black woman and that's definitely inspirational for anybody to follow the steps of. Um, she's always been positive, she's, she's shown me, um, you know, just, just yesterday at the, uh, we had a thing in Peekskill yesterday, the Hudson, Hudson, uh, the Hudson Valley Exposition right in Peekskill and she had her, um, her food truck set up outside there and people were coming to, you know, get food to eat and everything. But just seeing that she, you know, she does work tirelessly, you know, any questions that I've had since I've known her before I even started doing the campaign, 'cause I've always been pretty active with the community. She's always been a phone call away. Um, a lot of people in our community, when they need help, especially, um, the black community, when they need help, with their, uh, you know, 'cause a lot of them have access to me at all times, they'll call me and ask me if I can get in contact with Vivian. Rather than anybody else on the council, not to take anything away from anybody else on the council, but a lot of people that have came to me that, to ask for help from the city council, they would always say, "Is there any way that you can get in contact with Vivian?" I mean, I can name multiple organizations, just one to go off the top of the head right now is an organization called Community Voices Heard.
I know, we're familiar with them, yes.
Okay, yeah, so they reached out to me numerous of times in the last two weeks, just to get in contact with her because they feel like, you know, there's plenty of people on the council, but they know for a fact that they can work with her.
Okay.
So, that's been...
And you, describe him.
So, I know Andre, um, I went to school with his mother, again, I said it's a close-knit community, he is a dynamic young man and with a positive attitude. Um, and that's what we so sorely need on our council, someone who can really relate to the youth, um, who is emotional and positive and really thought-provoking and that's what I find in Andre. Um, he's been an inspiration, it's been just admirable to watch him as he's going through this process as a, a young man. So I'm excited for him and wishing him luck and I think he's gonna do a great job.
Now, I have a question that's totally off-chart and, um, there was a young man, I did a story, um, he got arrested, uh, by Yonkers police officers, uh, uh, lying about him and he was sentenced to fifteen years, he's a Peekskill resident. And he served four of those years and now, you know, the, the cops have been indicted and he's released and he can't find work. Like, he's in the union, you know what I'm saying, he just can't like, I mean, speak to that, you know, the, it, for someone like that, you know, would, that would be coming to you like, "Why do you should vote for, why they should vote for you?" You know, he's been proven that he didn't do what he served four years, that he shouldn't have, and he's been in the union and now he can't find work.
That goes to speak to just how, you know, people really think that we've moved forward.
Oh, his name's Jamal Smythe too, I'm sorry.
Yeah, he's a relative of mine, I know who you're talking about.
Okay, okay.
But that just goes to...
It is a small town, huh?
It's a very small town. But it goes to speak to just, you know, how one-sided people look, I mean, he, he should not have a problem getting a job, but unfortunately, you know, people will say, "Oh, it's so great and things have changed" and, and a lot of times they haven't. I mean, people coming back into the workforce who have been incarcerated, whether they should have been or not, should really have an opportunity to work, otherwise they wind up right back into the same situation.
And that's, go ahead. And that's also another reason why we have to encourage our people to get more involved.
Yeah.
In knowing things like this and to, and to do things, you know, we, from the outside, we can always say, you know, we, we complain sometimes about how, how cops handle situations or even how lawyers handle situations, but we're not encouraging our people to try to be police officers or try to be lawyers and be able to understand the law. 'Cause right now we're fighting against, sometimes at least we're fighting against a system that we're not even involved in, the majority of the time. So, situations like that, if we have people, you know, in our community that can actually be a part of that system that we're fighting with, it'll make more of a difference.
Right. Well, you, as a current city council person, common council person, and you running, um, I'm sure there's other situations like that in, in, in Peekskill. How do you speak to that? What can you do to make that situation specifically any better?
Well, we have to show that we're not, we're not, we're not scared to fight for what is right, you know, and that's that regardless of what religious belief or what political belief you have, there is a such thing as right and wrong. And if, if we can, you know, identify something as being wrong, then that's what we fight for. And that's, I think that's...
It's important to make people accountable, um, you know, as Andre said, people talk about, you know, this is happening, that's happening, and they're not involved. There are so many committees within the city, um, that our, our citizens don't know about, that they need to come and be a part of. They can be on, you know, um, the waterfront committees, they can be on the planning committees, zoning committees, so that they have a voice within the, the community. So they know what's going on and I've spoken to a couple of pastors about this, so that we can really get in so people know what's available and what's out there. Um, so that they can be a part of it and help to make the decisions that really, you know, make the city.
I'd like, I'd like to see personally more support for situations like that in, 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 in Westchester, period, you know what I'm saying? I just, we did a story on him and y'all were here, so, I also hear, I get calls a lot to come to your council meetings, 'cause y'all have some very heated council meetings. What, what the hell is going on up there, y'all?
I would say that's in the, kinda in the past, we did have some very heated council meetings, um, I think people like to see themselves on TV.
Well, Darryl Davis, well, he's not coming anymore?
He, he hasn't been there in quite a while. And, and you know what?
I like Darryl though.
And I get along with Darryl and I have to say that a lot of the things that Darryl has to say have a lot of, of merit to them. It's all in the way that you relay your message, you know, and anybody coming to the podium and yelling and screaming and it, it's, it's not the way business should be done. Um, people tune in to our common council meetings and for me, that's not how, how business should be done. I wanna get to the point, I wanna get the business taken care of, and if you have something to discuss, you can call me, I will set up a meeting with you and we can walk through this. But to stand at the podium and scream and, you know, call people, this and that, it's not the way it should be done.
Literally, I had a lot of people from Peekskill in your, one of the Peekskill Facebook pages and they're like, "Oh", 'cause we had a little disagreement publicly, we've squashed it, he's, he made an error in public and we corrected him in public and we're good now. So, so, um, I have no problem with him, but, you know, it was just like I was being told that, you know, he's telling me they're treating him racially and calling him names and they're telling me he's acting, I, I like, I, I never did none of the stories, 'cause I don't know, uh, where it's coming from, all I know is it's heated up there.
Right.
Yeah.
Well, we're really conducting business in a professional way now, so come and, and see one of our meetings and, uh, they're, they're actually kinda quiet.
Okay. So why should people revote for you?
People should revote for me because, can I go?
Yeah, 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 keep going.
I'm, I, I serve my city.
Caller, please hold.
I serve my city and as that, as you said, I am one of the, I am the only African-American person on the council and we have to be in the room to see how business is done, um, and to make sure that business is done fairly. Um, I set my record on working, uh, with our human resources, uh, department to make sure that everybody has an equal chance at getting jobs and while they have their jobs.
Pull your mic a little closer to you.
And while they have jobs, you know, that they're treated fairly, um...
Okay, keep going.
I was involved in our, our first African-American judge being appointed and there was a lot of controversy on that, um, and we, we got that done. Um, I'm a businessperson, I am downtown, um, all business people can come to me, I know how business works in Peekskill and how tough it can be. Um, economic development is one of our very, very important things and I'm really on board with that. And housing, um, the right kinda housing for everyone, as Andre said, I'm working with community voices and it's important that everyone is included. So, um, I feel that I've, you know, I'm committed to my position and I would like people's support.
Okay, we're gonna break real quick, we have a caller, please state your name and your purpose for calling or your comment for the candidates?
Uh, Lee S. Brown, Peekskill, New York.
Hello, 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 you have a comment?
Hello, Lee S. Brown, Peekskill, New York.
Hey, Lee, how you doing? What's happening? It's good to hear from you.
I have the comments, Mr. McKenzie and Mr. Rainey.
Before, before you get started, I, I understand that you may be related to one of the candidates.
I am, he's, he's my great aunt.
Okay, okay, okay. What is your comment or questions for the candidates?
Well, I, I have a question, Lee S., okay, I have a question.
Alright.
Well, listen, we hear you.
We're listening, Lee. Lee? Hello?
I'm here.
Oh, okay, you said you had a question and then we didn't hear the question.
Hello, Lee?
I'm here, I'm his great aunt.
Okay, can, can you hear us, can, can you hear me?
I can hear you, my question is this, we, um, just recently lost the YOa grant, it's Mr. McKenzie, Mr. McKenzie and Mr. Rainey, familiar with that?
I am.
Okay, you know what that entails?
The program within the youth bureau and the...
The name of the program, the YOa program.
Yes.
That's a three hundred thousand dollar grant, that's true, my dear, the majority has let this grant drop. We have fifty, sixteen to twenty-four-year-old at-risk youth now.
Do you have your, do you have the compu-, sorry to interrupt you, do you have your computer on and if you do, can you turn it down, 'cause you're echoing?
Uh, no, I, I can walk away from him, I'm outside on the patio.
Okay, go ahead.
You know, I, uh, Mr. Rainey's platform is the youth and working very closely in the community. Um, he also works at the Kylie Center, who has had troubles the last, especially eight years, the, the majority voted to charge the children ten dollars to enter. Mr. McKenzie, you're on that council at the time, right?
I was not on the council at that time.
No, you came in after Bennett, I'm sorry, my apologies. So, Mr. Rainey, who volunteers part-time and works part-time there, I've never ever heard Mr. Rainey come up and, and, and protest those fees, although I did hear Mr. Davis do it. And, um, I actually never heard Mr. Rainey come up and talk about anything that's going on with the Kylie Center. Despite the fact that in two thousand and two, the city of Peekskill entered into a maintenance agreement with the Kylie Center that they would maintain the Kylie Center while they're having programs and that's not been done since the force administration.
Okay, would either one of you like to address that?
Well, in terms of the grant that you're talking about, um, I know there was a lot of, uh, information going back and forth, but the city manager and the human resource department did investigate the grant and to find out why it was lost. Um, there were some rumblings that the grant wasn't written correctly, but that was proven to be incorrect, the grant was written correctly. Um, and before the grant was entered into the application, um, we were told that we were probably going to lose seventy-five percent of that grant anyway, prior to the application. Unfortunately, we lost the entire grant, um, based upon the granter wanting to give it to larger organizations and, uh, it was, it's been researched and that was what we were told. So I don't know that there was anything that was incorrectly done, I know we've had a discussion on this.
I, that's not at all true, we've had this grant for twenty years, ma'am, twenty years.
I can only tell you that this is the information that was given back to us.
Pardon me?
I said, "This is the information that was given back to us, um, from the granter." And it's unfortunate that we lost it.
Do you, or do you know what grant I'm talking about?
Tell me which one you're talking about specifically.
We're talking about the Westchester Workforce Development Academy for the youth that is held out of the, uh, youth bureau. But the YOa grant is the, um, the grant from the Department of Labor, Workforce Investment Opportunity Act.
Is this the grant we were talking about, we, we thought it was misappropriated? If not, then no, I don't have that information, it hasn't been given to us.
This is the grant that we talked about that was deliberately dropped, we had, uh, Mr. Chupel and a Ms. Bird running that program.
Correct.
That, that targets the at-risk from sixteen to twenty-four, with twenty-five pre-registered for Sep-, for September. And now what happens with these children in high school? That won't be taking these programs, this is for ultrasound, EKG, CNA, all of these, all of these little young girls that were at risk that, you know, had a little trouble with the police that you now see doing home health aid and CNA jobs and really being productive in the community, there's no more to follow with the dropping of this grant.
And it's absolutely unfortunate.
This city for eight years, for eight years.
It's absolutely unfortunate, I agree with you.
Pardon me, Mr. McKenzie?
I said, "No, I agree with you, it's unfortunate", but it wasn't, you know, if they're not going to give us the grant, I mean, it's unfortunate that we lost the grant and you're right, there's a lot of people that are gonna suffer from that and, you know, the employees that were lost. No one wants to see that, but those are the budget cuts, those are the cuts that are there.
The majority was letting know ahead of time before they hired this doctor person, who doesn't have a doctorate in youth, by the way, it's an online doctorate in human resources. Your running mate Kathy Talbert and amongst others sat on a, a committee to hire this woman, why it didn't go straight to human resources and a vetting process, that's the way the Democrats do, but that wasn't done. I, I have a problem with you and Mr. Rainey, running around here talking about your view so much with the community in the last eight years, this majority, this majority has let these people fall through the cracks and he can sit over there and he can laugh, he plays with kids from thirteen to twelve, twelve to thirteen-year-olds. We gotta talk about their parents.
Alright, what?
Their parents who have no jobs.
What I, what I, what I can say is the, the last eight years of the majority of whatever the council agreed to, I wasn't on the council, so I'm not a part of that agreement.
No, my dad was right down there in the lion's mouth in the Kylie Center handing out book bags.
What I can't...
I told him that you take the credit for that, it was going on long before you were born.
I'll let you go.
Once again.
Alright, what I can say is I have been involved with the youth for years. Whether, um, whether you see me at the council meetings complaining or not, doesn't define what I do for my community. What I will tell you though, what I will...
I'm not gonna take that from you, 'cause it's anyone, I'm not taking that from you.
Alright, what I will...
I've seen you sitting behind the desk while they were all sitting there playing.
Alright, what I will tell you is that, 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 that policy that what they tried to pass, the, the, what, six years ago, I think it was? Four, six years ago about the, uh, charging the, the, the youth kids ten dollars to come into the...
That was, that was last, that was the last campaign, if you need to probably study.
So that was four years ago, that was four years ago, you're saying? Alright, well, whenever it was, whenever that policy was passed, I was, not only was I against that, but I was there when, when Jimmy Mack and Darryl Davis and everybody else there and everybody else in the community, for that matter, came to go against that and protest that. So, uh, and I wouldn't go on to a city council to represent the people in the community to start doing things that'll go against the people that I'm representing. That's not my position.
Listen to me.
I'm listening.
I, I, I am so very proud of you, let me just see that. But I, I think that before they threw you out there, you should've done some studies and looking to see what was going on, what has been going on since they had control, that they fought twenty-six years for, the last eight years. The programs we've lost, what is not going on, our crime stats that aren't reported.
Caller, please hold, go ahead.
Shootings that have been going on every other weekend that have not been reported. These are children, the twenty-two-year-old who was just arrested for slashing tires, that was already during weekends in jail for something stupid or hitting his child.
And that's, that, all of that stuff, you, everything you...
Over the people, my dear, you need to be out here.
Everything you just named is the exact rea-
It's a new day, it, it's, it's not a new day.
Right. Everything you just mentioned is the exact reason why I felt like I need to step up and do this.
And, and I wanna, and I wanna stop, I wanna stop you right there, Lee, we have another caller, you can stay on the line. Uh, caller, um, please state your name and your, and your comment or question for the candidates?
Uh, yes, this is in regard to the, um, the YOa grant that was lost, this is an anonymous call from upstate New York.
Okay, thank you. Go ahead.
Hi, yes, I'd like to clarify some information because I write grants myself, that grant had no, um, income, um, budget deficits at all. What the grant indicated, that seventy-five percent of, the one hundred percent of the three hundred thousand dollars should go to out-of-school youth and twenty-five to in-school. And the grant was lost due to poor writing skills. And this is an anonymous call from upstate.
Well, Ms. Bird, I'm not sure that it was actually, um, done that way, we were advised by, uh, council and we were advised by the city manager.
It's RSP, that goes through New York State, um, and I do have a copy of the RSP, which is a public, which is public information, which it indicates that seventy-five percent of the funding goes to out-of-school and twenty-five of the allocation goes to in-school because the budgets were done like that throughout Westchester County. Now, everyone else in the county has their jobs but us.
It's very, it's unfortunate, as I said, but again, the way it was explained to us...
I'm just, I'm just, I'm just trying to clarify the information, I'm only on base on the fact that I have the facts, I don't know what you've been told or how you've been told it, no disrespect to anyone on the panel, but I figure if you're gonna go on the air, maybe you need to know.
Well, I appreciate you giving us that information, but again, I can only give you the information that was given to us.
And we thank you for calling.
Oh, it's, it's public information, we can email it to you and you can have it in black and white.
Okay, that'd be great.
No problem, thank you.
Thank, thank you for your call. Okay, y'all wanna address any of the other stuff that was, okay.
That was interesting.
Yes, I guess this is what you need, well, you know, we, people before politics, this is gonna be the show where you're gonna get some, uh, you're gonna get it here, so...
But it's good, it's good for people to voice their concerns and, and to get answers.
Okay, so...
We see you at the boat post, good night.
Good night.
Good night.
Good night, thank you for calling. Alright, so we like to thank our callers, um, and anybody else who wants to call, the number is seven one eight, seven oh five, four nine five nine. If you wanna call and ask any questions to the candidates.
On nine one four nine six nine six four nine nine.
Yeah, that one too, yeah. So Damon, you any got any questions for the candidates?
No, I'm, I'm...
Maybe as far as law enforcement and stuff or something?
I was, I was, I was just intrigued, um, over the grant thing, I didn't know that that was such a big deal. Well, I guess if you, if you're having, um, money for youth, you know, it, it's definitely, especially communities like Peekskill, Mount Vernon, Austin, um, all the cities that, um, I say the Democrats let go down the hill since, um, Andrew O'Rourke. Um, but McKenzie, are you, I'm not sure if I know your, Joe, are you related Gerald McKenzie?
Deceased Gerald McKenzie?
Yes.
Yes, cousins, I married his cousin.
Oh, you married his cousin, oh, that was my friend, I lived down the street from him on Harrison Avenue, um, many, 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 many years ago.
That's Gerald McKinney.
Yes.
Okay, those are separate...
McKinney, McKinney.
McKinney, I'm not related to the McKinneys.
Okay, oh, okay, okay, okay.
Know them well, went to school with them.
Okay, I used to live in Peekskill, um, and, um, I, I still have family up there. So, I'm, I'm well aware of the, of, of the city, I used to go to, uh, Uriah Hill School, um, and, and, and then I left. Um, I came up here to White Plains, but, um, Peekskill is facing like, a lot of the towns, Austin, you know, Greenburg, even Mount Vernon, some areas of Yonkers with economic development. Um, what kinda different plans? You know, because we see, we see that, you know, the, the type of economic development that's needed is really not happening in those, in, in, in those small cities. You know, what type of plans do you have and, and do you have to try to bring more economic de-, economic development in the city to allow the city to grow?
Well, currently, Peekskill has really turned into an artistic and, um, kinda like a restaurant world, so we've really filled that portion of it, we, our artists have really brought the city back. Um, we have fabulous restaurants and you can have live music and entertainment any day of the week now, but where we are lacking is retail. Um, and, you know, some mixed-use type of things with, um, for economic development. So we have a plan in place, we're trying to build our waterfront to bring the waterfront business to the downtown. Um, I was part of, um, a commission that changed legislation where we had artist lofts, um, you could only rent to artist loft, so we've kinda loosened that a little bit. And the drive is to get people to come in who wanna live and work there and spend money there, and we're also looking for developers who are going to develop and include everyone.
Right.
Um, and to, you know, not only do, um, housing, but to bring in businesses on the bottom levels of, uh, the stores. We're looking at something called spot development as well, so instead of trying to develop one entire area, but where you have empty lots and so forth, to try to get those done first and, and bring things in, but it's difficult, it's hard. Um, we, our, our communities are small, um, retailers are afraid that, you know, people are not gonna spend money and we're finding just the opposite. As a downtown business, you, if the business there attracts people and I have people coming from all over for the business, um, and I think that as we develop, that will continue, we have a young woman who just moved into town and she started a business, um, she calls it the Beehive, where you can kind of rent office space and so forth, but she's made it a very hip and modern place to do business and people are coming in from all over to rent those spaces, so, we're looking for developers like that.
Well, let me, let me ask you a quick question, um, Andre, um, from what I'm getting, a lot of people feel like they added you to the ticket to get the youth. Like, maybe they were, I don't know, out of touch with the youth and you were the ticket to getting the youth, so, speak to your relationship to the youth and why you support this ticket and, you know...
Um, mainly because they, they had asked me to do this actually, um, about four years ago. And that's when I, I said, I, I said no, because I didn't really know anything about, you know, politics or how, how the city was ran or anything like that. So over the last few years, I've been working kinda like under, under this ticket, I should say, just to get more information on how things are ran, you know, how things are going. And, um, you know, that's when they, you know, they, they asked me if I was to join the city council, what would I do? So I gave them a list of things that I would like to change and that I would like to add to the city. And they gave it back to me and said, "If you're on the city council, you have to think on a bigger scale. What you're thinking of doing to the city, you could do on your own without being up here, you gotta think on a bigger scale. You can make bigger changes, you'll have more power to make better changes in the city, especially working with the youth, there's a lot more that you can do." That's what got me involved, that's what inspired me to get more involved in it. Now, I've been working with them, I do a lot of stuff for the community as it is now, and the majority of the things that I've done, I've seen, if not all of them, most of them, at everything that I've done, you know, we've done Christmas drives, fish fries, book, bookbag drives, senior citizens, Christmas parties, like, we've done a little bit of everything throughout the entire year and they've been able to come through more of the events that we've done or more of the campaign fan fundraisers or whatever it is, they've been there to support all of it. Now, knowing that my generation is not as involved as they could be, that, I, I'm, I'm not doubting that that's part of the reason why they got me or why they wanted me to run for the ticket, but I also believe that that is more of a reason that I should do it anyway. You know, um, we had, uh, last year, the last election, there was, um, seventeen people from the ages of eighteen to thirty-five that voted in the local election. Now...
You said seventeen?
Seventeen, that's almost like saying one person each age, one eighteen-year-old, one nineteen-year-old, one twenty-year-old, always thirty-five. Seventeen people voted in the la-, in the local election last year, I mean, the last election from ages eighteen to thirty-five. Now, when I go out there, when I do my campaigns, when I do my fundraisers, when I do my speeches in front of people, I tell them, 'cause I don't wanna confuse people with, with, with political parties, like, I wouldn't wanna confuse people with religions, it's, if you're not gonna go out there and vote, at least get involved, you know, and that's what I'm trying to do. So even if the people don't necessarily go out there and, 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 and vote for Andre or vote for this person or that person, at least they'll be inspired to get involved now. So, I do think that's, that's part of the reason why they would want me to be on this ticket, but that's also part of the reason why I think I should be.
Let me, let me ask, since you, since you brought that number up, I'm, I'm real like big on, um, younger people, um, getting involved in the, in, in the political process. Um, and, and I'm not even, you know, putting a party on it, doesn't matter what party, I think young people should be involved, involved in. What, and, and as far as Peekskill, because, because that number is out, is outstanding. Um, what do you think is, is the fact is that young people, um, in Peekskill really are, are not involved in, in local politics, in city politics?
Because they don't, they don't, they don't, it's not that, people look at it and say that we don't care, but I think more of it is a reason that... Because they don't, they don't, they don't, it's not that, people look at it and say that we don't care, but I think more of it is a reason that we don't really know what we can do. Like, if, even before I decided to run, you know, it's, once, once you realize what you can do, then you get more interested. And like, when you, you know, uh, hundreds of people voted for the, the presidential election. You know, they seen, you know, when Obama was up there saying, he go, change gonna come, things gonna happen, everybody's like, yeah, I believe that, we hope that. But at the same time, you have people that'll, that'll tell me, even, um, you know, Ms., 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 Ms. Brown that just called, you know, she was one of the people that told me, you know, when you get into politics, you gotta be careful because politics can be dirty, politics can be backstabbing.
Yes.
Politics can be wrong, people will lie to your face and shake your hand, people will do this, and this is what you're telling people to go out and vote for?
Right.
Everything you say about politics is negative and you're telling me that I gotta go get all my people to go out there and vote for this? Why?
Right. But, yeah, and, and, and you're a hundred percent correct, but the only way you could, I mean, the only way you could get rid of that, you know, is, is, is to vote. I think the, the, you know, if we don't, if we don't energize the, the young people, we don't energize, you know, it's like I, 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 I was out with, um, um, a couple of candidates today and they asked me to say some few words at, at, at a church. And what, and what I told them at the church, I said, you know, I, I run into a lot of people that only vote on presidential elections.
Yeah.
You know, and I told them Obama cannot get your street fixed. It doesn't come from Obama. Oh, if your tree falls in the house, you're not calling the White House to make sure DPW gets your tree. You know, and all that is, 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 is local politics. And, 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 and I think that we have to begin to educate, um, the constituents, you know, on, on their power. You know, and, and I think because nothing changes, and this is why nothing changes, because, because, uh, because people don't come out and vote. And, and, and part of the system wants it that way. You know, there's some people in the system, no matter what party, Democrat, Republican- They, they want, they want it to be that way, that people do not come out and vote. I mean, I, I think it's sad, like, you know, um, a city of, as big as Yonkers, you know, you could win a primary with seven thousand votes, you know? Mount Vernon, you could win a primary of five thousand votes, you know? And so, you know, people are not coming out and, and, and they're not voting. And I think we have to continue to, um, really educate people to get them out. And then we could, we could put good, good candidates in, 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 in office.
We could change their reputation a little bit.
Yeah, well, yeah, listen, look, I, I, I always say, you know, I, you know, politics is a, is a cutthroat business. You know, and, and, and people don't, until you run for office, you don't get it. You know, you really, you don't, you don't, you don't get it until you run for office. And when you run for office, you're like, Jesus Christ, it has nothing to do with, with, with the issues. It has nothing to do with voting, and, 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 and the, the primary is the last thing you're thinking about. You know, I mean, there's still people going to court tomorrow just to be on the ballot, you know? And, you, Mount Vernon, not, not just Mount Vernon.
Oh, Yonkers too, yeah, yeah.
Everywhere, you know, everywhere. They're still, just to get on the ballot. So, like, at the end of the day in September, you know, the average person, when they, when they go and they vote, they don't even know what that candidate went through just to pull the lever.
Trust me, I know what you mean. I know what you mean.
To, to, to be up there. And, and, and if they don't understand the process, like, like, one, one candidate called me, she said, oh my God, I, I have no money. And, and, and I said, okay, well, what are you gonna do? You know, you gotta campaign. She says, well, I didn't think about money. I said, well, what happens if you didn't get challenged in your signatures? You gotta get a lawyer, you know, you know, and people don't know that. I think we gotta start teaching young kids the political process and how to be a candidate and what does it take to be the candidate. Um, campaign finances and, 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 you know, I mean, you know, my friend, you know, and I criticize him a lot when I'm down in the city, but Brooklyn Borough President Eric Adams, he didn't win on Election Day. He won because he kept the guy in court and he spent all his money. So he didn't even have to debate the guy. You, you understand what I'm saying? And that's the side of politics that people don't see, that, that, that dirty side of politics, that I'll take you out in court. You know, I'll, I'll make you spend so much money on lawyers that you won't even have no money to campaign. You won't even have time to campaign.
Right.
You know, because you're stressing out about, am I just gonna be on the ballot?
Right.
You know, and, and I think we need to get young people involved, you know, so, so more young people will, will, will get into it and they'll be prepared. Because I think that's another why young people don't get, because it's, it's just, it's just weird. When you get into election laws, it's just a whole nother, you know, I think I'm going back to school just to study election laws. It's a lot of money, man, you know? You know, every two years, you could get, you, you, you could get like two years' salary just working once every year. You know, it's, it's, it's crazy.
That's real though, serious.
You know, but, but I, I think, um, now, are y'all, y'all running as Democrats?
Correct.
Are y'all primarying anybody as Democrats?
No.
Oh, so y'all, y'all, y'all not, y'all, y'all, so now, do you have Republican?
Yeah, Republicans running against us.
Yeah, Republicans running against you. Do you have any other, uh, lines?
Um, in- independents and working for them.
Okay, you're on the independence line. You're right with me. So-
That's the stuff.
Well, let me say that, that we were endorsed by them, but we will, there's a primary for the independents.
I, I, yeah, I was just, I was just reading. There's, so they're, they're putting up some people against, uh, uh, against your guys too for the primary?
As a write-in, yes.
As a write-in. So they're still trying to, they, they take over the Independence Party?
Right.
It, it, it still hasn't stopped with Doug Coate.
Hasn't stopped.
That's, 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 you know, and that's what I'm talking about.
And for those that don't know Doug Coate, he's the Westchester-
Republican.
Um, chairman.
Republican chairman.
And, and Board of Election Commissioner.
Yeah. Now, now, what do your guys think? Since, since, since we're on this topic, do you, do you feel that if there's, there's a conflict of interest, that the, that the county chairman also can be the Board of Election Commissioner? I, I, I gotta ask it, you know, I, you know, I'm being honest.
You're gonna try to get us in trouble, man.
Cause I got a petition out there to stop it. You know, I just tell you, I think it, personally, I think it's a conflict of interest.
It gets so convoluted. And, and as you say, there are so many things that twist in the cycle and people dibble and dabble and they get into everything. Um, it seems to be a, a, a conflict. Outright, it appears to be a conflict, but, you know, people get away with a lot of things.
You could just tell them I twisted your arm to say that, just in case Reggie call you up.
See, y'all are getting a call tomorrow from Reggie. Y'all, y'all are getting a call tomorrow. Reggie Lafayette and all his people listen to the show.
I told you to get a text message right now, right?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Uh, you let Damon walk you into that one. It's gonna be, it's gonna be his fault, but y'all gotta get a call.
No, no, he's gonna blame you.
He's gonna blame him.
But I, I wanna go back to you asked the question of, of why we wanted Andre on the ticket. And I would be remiss without saying that, you know, we live in a city where we need to have an African-American male as a role model on our council. And it was, wasn't about, you know, because when he does work with the youth. But this is a positive, young man who I think brings a lot to the table. Um, and, you know, as you said, we need to start young so that people know how this works and so that they're built into, and not even a political person, but just as a person that cares and cares about their community and works for their community. And it's not about a Republican and it's not about, you know, a Democrat, but it's really what work you're doing for your community. Um, and I think he brings that to the table. And again, I'm excited for that. So it's, it's not just that he's with the youth, but he's a role model.
I think it's great because most politicians are not community leaders.
Right.
Let, let's make that clear.
Absolutely.
Most politicians that we elect are not community leaders. They, they just get in it because someone cosigns on them in, in our gangland-style political parties. But they're not community leaders. So when, when you have a young brother like him coming up and he's been in the community and he says, you know what, you know, I can make bigger changes, you know, for my community as an elected official. You know, because then, you know, I have the bully pulpit, you know, to say, hey, listen, I have direct line, you have direct line to the congressman, you have a direct line to people that could actually bring funds and, and do things, you know, on, on a larger scale for your community. And, and I think that's, I, I think that's great. I, I definitely think that's great. Um, I'm gonna ask both of y'all, do, do, do you think that we need more, um, mentorship in the political process for young people trying to?
Definitely do. We definitely do. Um, I think that's important. In any, in any, in anything that you get involved in in life period, you always have, like, you look at sports, you always have, like, practice before the actual-
Right.
Game time.
Right.
You know, you always have training before the actual competition, you know, so. And, and, and this mentally, because, you know, the mind is the most powerful thing in the world and you have to, you have to be prepared for anything. And you also have to have knowledge of everything. You know, a lot of the things that I've learned, you know, they've taught me a lot of things over the past couple of years, but I've, experiences taught me more in the last three months than they could have ever tried to teach me. You know what I'm saying? So it's, um, you know, there are a few people that I've been able to reach out to that I could just call and ask, like, you know, you know, somebody said this or, you know, they, they, they told me about this policy or, you know what I'm saying, they, they'll tell me their opinion on it. But even getting their opinion on it, you still gotta know where they're coming from. Cause you know, certain people have their own agendas on what they believe in. So it's just a matter of trying to understand what's best for what you're trying to do.
Right.
And realizing that what you can, what you're going to do can, you know, not only, I guess, define who I am as a person, but the people that are following me are gonna do the same things.
That's right. And, and nobody getting, got into the, nobody gets into a seat knowing everything.
Right, right.
You know, I mean, look-
They either say, oh, they're too involved for them, they're too young, they don't know, but those people that are in there didn't know either.
Right.
So I'm, I'm just like, what was your experience before you got there?
Right, and, and, you know, and I think young people, does, does, is there a term limit in, in, in your seats?
There are. So for the mayoral, it's two years and for, uh, council, it's four years.
It's a four, it's a four-
It's a four-year term.
No, no, it's a term limits.
No.
Oh, no.
So you could just get in there and retire.
You could be in there like eighty years.
You could just die in a seat. You could stay there till you die.
You wanna do that?
You know, yeah, yeah, yeah. You, I know y'all gonna, y'all gonna drive home saying, yo, this guy's crazy. But, you know, I think it should be, it's, you should not be eighty-five or ninety years old in a political seat. I'm, I'm really against that. You know, Charles Rangel, he should sit down. Like, you know, I saw Charles Rangel, I was like, Jesus Christ, the guy you blow, he's gonna fall over. All respect due to him, but it's like, come on, man, allow young people, allow young people to, to get in the seats. It doesn't make any sense. I don't understand why people stay in thirty, I get it, retirement benefits, I, I get it, a pension, I understand that. But after you get your little time, get out. I mean, that's, the Mount Vernon race is ridiculous.
You spoke about mentorship, but, I mean, and as you're saying, I, I think you're right, I agree. You've been in there, you've been there for a long time. You need to mentor the next person coming in and then have programs behind that so that you, you can always be in that political arena, but you're teaching someone else. The other thing I think we miss out on is, is really teaching our community what it's about.
Right.
I mean, you said it's important to vote. It's beyond important to vote. But you should not let anybody, and I don't care what party that you're in, buy your vote. You can't let anybody tell you, I'm gonna do this for you, shake your hand.
You go through the hood, give it out some hot dogs and hamburgers, oh, he fed the hood.
The ice cream store.
But, but you hit it. And, and I get so angry with that. No matter what your passion is, no matter what your platform is, you have to realize that, you know, this is a council of seven people and I have one vote. If Andre makes it, he has one vote. It takes a majority of that council. So if somebody comes out and they telling you, oh, you know, if you vote for me and I'm gonna make sure you get this, well, if everybody else is not on board with it, it's not. So you have to be responsible to know what the issues are. Take part, come out, be on these committees, find out what's going on in your city.
Well, let me, let me flip that for a minute. For those that stay in power and stay in power and it's to their benefit for other people not to know.
Right.
I mean, I'm just keeping it real, like, you're saying.
But then you're not working for the people. I mean-
Right, and you're, and, right.
It, and, and for me, that's not what it's about. I mean, you're working for your community. Um, and if, if that's how you see it, then you really shouldn't be there. I mean, that, that's basically it. You can't just keep sitting there and do nothing.
Politicians say, like, they really don't know what they want. Like, I have to give them and tell them what they want. They don't, really don't know what they want.
Uh, yeah, Ernie Davis said that.
Okay.
But, but, you know. But, but the, but the whole thing is-
I, I was just gonna say a candidate. I was, I was really gonna leave that one.
Once you said it, I knew what you said.
You said it, I didn't say it.
Hey, hey, they know I'd say it, you know, but the whole thing is, you know, how do, we, it, it's, politics is, I think it's taking a turn. You know, where so many people are dissatisfied, you know, um, if you look at the approval rate, you know, of, 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 of Congress is all-time low, you, you have politicians going to jail for everything under the sun. You know, which, and I think that a lot more should go, but, you know. So people are not, people are not trusting, but also, you know, people have to be involved. So, I mean, we have to get, we have to get people involved across, uh, 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 across the party line. But, but then, you know, how do we change that? You know, it, it has to be, uh, communities actually coming together. Like, it, it just can't be, you know, I always say, you know, I'm a big advocate for oversight of police departments. And, you know, I say it's not a Mount Vernon, like, like this, the young, the incident that happened to the young lady. It's not a Mount, it's not a Mount Vernon problem, it's a Westchester problem. You know, because, you know, it could happen, it could have happened in Peekskill, you know? And, and there's no police department immune of police brutality in Westchester County. I don't care what, what, what police department it is, but we continue to look at issues as a, a, a singular town's problem.
Like, oh, that's Mount Vernon, that, that's, that's, yeah.
But you know what, though? That, with that being said too, the city of Peekskill itself is making a big change too. I mean, we have, it's, I think now it's just a matter of getting everybody to actually work together. You know, we have a lot of organizations in the city of Peekskill for, you know, task force. We also have, we just got reinstated the NAACP in Peekskill.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
That's great.
Just recently.
And I hope that they're active, cause I'm gonna be honest, since I've been back, the only, no, the only Westchester chapter I know of that is actually doing anything is White Plains-Greenberg.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Well, this chapter is just organizing.
Like, I mean, for real, like, I mean, like, she's out. When there's events, she, when there's a protest, she's out. She comes to the press conferences. She gets her people there. There's one in Mount Vernon. I don't know, I know they there, I know what building they in, but I've never seen them. But I did see a banner in the parade though.
Peak?
You know what I'm saying? Like, serious, serious. Like, I mean, that's, and that's, and that's, and I think New Rochelle actually does something. I see their name sometimes, but I don't know what they do.
Nothing.
But White Plains-Greenberg is actually the only one I could see that actually is a strong force. And we haven't, how many municipalities in Westchester? You know what I'm saying? Like-
But didn't she shut down Peekskill or Austin? What, what, um, Hazel Dukes shut down Austin because they were supporting Mami Abu-Jabbar. She shut, one of them, she shut down. I don't know what happened to Peekskill, but I, I think it was Austin, she literally just, she shut the whole chapter down.
Well, well, we're coming to the end of the show and I wanna give each one of y'all, it's, it's been like, we, it's been a good show, we had a lot of guests, um, some callers calling. I wanna give y'all a chance, um, in ninety seconds or less, the last words, um, social media, how people can find you, whatever, oops, whatever. I'm pushing the mic.
Alright. Alright, my name is Andre Rainey. On social media, I'm on Facebook, facebook.com slash noodlenoodle. Um, you can contact me through A-Rainey.
Okay, they, now, yeah, what's up with the noodle? Like, what's that? Okay. We didn't address it. We didn't address it. Your grown man, they noodle. What's, what's going on with the noodle?
Nah, I'm gonna tell you a funny story about that too. Let me tell you. I, I'm gonna listen to the show next week, he gonna say something about that. I can tell he gonna say something about that. Now, but, um, noodle was a nickname that my mother gave me when I was young. I couldn't stand it, but I kinda, uh, it was like one of the things that made you stand out. You know what I'm saying? So I kinda just ran with it as I got a little older. But let me tell you the funny story. I was knocking on doors just like three weeks ago, you know, just, you know, letting people know about the campaign. And I would knock on the door and they'd say, you know, who is it? And I'd say, Andre Rainey, I'm running for city council. Can I speak to you for a minute, please? They'll open the door and say, oh, Noodle, what's up? How you doing, man? So it's like, we kinda-
Maybe I put noodle on your palm card somewhere.
Actually, actually, it does say, it's noodle, it says noodle in parentheses on everything.
Yes, it does. And people know noodle all over Peekskill, but Andre Rainey, like, they gotta get to know him. They gotta get to know the other side. But anyway, facebook.com slash noodlenoodle. Uh, if you wanna email me for any questions, especially those in Peekskill's, A-RaineyForThePeople@gmail.com. Rainey is spelled R-A-I-N-E-Y. Um, and I'm a, I'm a Peekskill resident and I'm, I'm here to make things better. I'm trying to do a lot of stuff for the youth, for the community. Also collaborations with everybody in our city. I think it's gonna be more positive, more positive influence and more positive impact when we all, when, when we can all learn to work together.
Okay, before you go, I wanna beef with you. You said next, I'm gonna listen next week to see if he say anything. You should listen every week just because.
Oh, yes, okay. There you go, there you go.
I'm just saying, I just put it out there.
Every week.
Yeah, yeah.
I'm Vivian McKenzie. You can find me at V-McKenzie. It's M-C-K-E-N-Z-I-E at CityOfPeekskill.com. You can also stop in at the T-room. It's nine seventy-nine Main Street. I'm there all the time if you have any questions.
Well, yeah, what is the T-room? We didn't get a chance. What is, what is the T-room?
The T-room is a traditional English-style T-room and we serve lunch and early dinner. Um, we're open Monday through Saturday. I do catering and I have a soul food mobile truck as well, so.
Soul food mobile truck? That's what's up. That's what's up.
That's what's up, yeah.
Yo, yeah. That was the best reaction we got on this.
Only way to give better answers was to come with some samples or something like that. You'd have got even better reactions. Only way to give better answers was to come with some samples or something like that, you'd have got even better reaction.
I'll bring them down next week.
Okay.
Yes.
We had, we had our financial advisor, Rashad come in and in between all this politics, he said, three words here and two words there. He really just been sitting here patient and hasn't said too much, so.
Yeah, nah, you know, it's not a problem, you know, I'm always here, so, um, I'm just listening and learning as much as everybody else, so I appreciate just the, you know, opportunity to come up. And learn more about politics, very interesting.
Yeah, give you uh all your contact.
Bilal Group, L O C dot com, that's the website, um, B I L A L Group, L O C dot com, and everything is on there, all information is on there.
And I gotta get more diligent, but he'll have articles on once a month, he's already submitted some, I just have to put them up, so you 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 see him on Black Westchester. Damon K. Jones, what have you been, what what uh, any last words, where you gonna be, you always somewhere, I know you got somewhere to go.
I'm not sure, uh, Mr. Lime.
Y'all don't know, he's he's a walking press conference, like. You know, when you go to the, you see the people when they go to an outside concert, they got them chairs, they come in a bag and they pull it out, he has a podium. In the trunk, it it pulls out, yeah. And you put the wood up there and they plug the mics in and bang, we have a press conference right here, yeah, yeah, yeah.
That's what I'm talking about.
Yeah, I don't, yeah.
I gotta get on that level.
You don't want to, brother. But it's it's, you know, I mean, Jesus.
Well, when you don't have a lot of law enforcement that speak, black law enforcement, he's the one you see, so when you need a black law enforcement person speaking. He's not the only one, there's a lot of others, but he's the most vocal one.
Matter of fact, Lee was supposed to get me up there a long time ago, I'll, if she's listening, I'm still waiting on that date, if she's listening. But, um, I think something's probably coming up, Ms. uh, Ms. Alom called me, um, I have to call her back, probably something with the. Wrongfully, um, wrongfully incarcerated, we also have the the U, the the meeting at the United Nations dealing with. Um, police crimes and. No, it's the, I think it's the twenty-second. That's coming up, um, and I think that's it this week, it's really not, it's really not that that much going on.
We got caught tomorrow, everybody gonna be in court.
Yeah, I'm not gonna be, I have to take my mother to the hospital, I might, I might try to stop by, I chipped my tube, so I gotta go to the dentist as as fast as possible. But, um, that's, I'm quiet, I'm kinda quiet, but, um.
Yeah, yeah, he's, yes, yes, yes. He gets certain issues, it's, yeah.
Yeah, but, um, I I wish y'all guys the best of luck, um, and, you know, our doors is open, you know, you can come in anytime. Whatever issues y'all, y'all wanna discuss going on in Peak Skill.
And I don't, I don't know who sent me the press release when y'all, I first ran that y'all were running, so keep that coming. Cause we trying to cover Westchester, but I really don't have nobody in Peak Skill, so it's like, you know what I'm saying, we really don't know. I've been invited up there to the press, to the city council meetings, we just ain't been up there.
Yeah, I've been up there a couple of times, and and, um, you know, Peak Skill's like a, is 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 a hometown to me, you know, so. You know, I always wanna know what's going on and 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 try to stay, um. You know, my cousins all, my cousin always telling me to come up there, I don't know if y'all know, um, you you probably know Noodle, Tony Jones? Yeah, that's, that's my first cousin.
Oh, wow.
Yeah, 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 that that's my first cousin, and I'm also related to the Buffaloes up there, and, um, and they're on on my mother's side.
Buffalo had the hair salon.
Yes, yes.
There you go.
Yeah, yeah, so I got roots in Peak Skill.
You know some of my family in Smythe?
Yeah, yeah, I haven't been up there so long, I mean, but, yeah, you know, I I left in, what, like, third grade, I moved out. I was on, um, six seventy-three Harrison Avenue, um.
Right in the middle of the block.
Yep, there you go, yep, yep, and.
Couple of doors down from the church.
Yeah, there you go, there you go, I used to go to that church and eat the egg hunt, all all that stuff, I had a great time. But, um, yeah, so I still have a connection to Peak Skill, you know, even though I'm, you know, so I I definitely wanna, you know, find out what's going on. And 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 keep up with with the politics up there, man.
We're moving in the right direction, so.
That's great, that's that, that's definitely great.
That's what's up, that's what's up, and, um, you've been listening to Black Westchester Presents People Before Politics, we're on every Sunday, six to eight. Um, couple of things real quick, um, and since we did mention Darryl Davis, and I have to say this. We, like I said, we had a, we had a, we had a meeting of the minds, we had a public thing, we made, but we're good. And one of the reasons I didn't go up to Peak Skill, I am not gonna let anyone use me as a black man to tear that black man down. Now, me and him don't see eye to eye on everything, but you're not going to use me to take him down, and it and it was, and and I felt that was like what the call was. Like, cause you know, I kinda handled the situation and it was like, everyone that didn't like him was my friend now, you know what I'm saying, oh, you need to come up here, you know what I'm saying? So if I have a problem with you, as he found out, I will go to you, I called his show, I wrote about him, we're good now, you know what I'm saying, so I have no problems with him, so. I won't let you use me as a black man to just tear down another black man, if he does something to me, I will, he will answer to me, you know what I'm saying, so other than that. Um, also, I wanted to say, you know, um, we, um, started a straw poll, something new for Ma- uh, Mount Vernon, for the Mount Vernon mayorial and. City Council election, um, you know, um, they usually don't have polls in our community. And usually when they do have polls, it doesn't for our community, so some of our community is not taking it serious, but, cause they're not used to polls, but. Go to blackwestchester.com if you live in Mount Vernon and vote on a poll, it's anonymous, nobody knows. Who was up as of right now, um, Thomas was up, him and Maureen keep going back and forth. Him and Maureen Walker, Andre and, uh, what's his name, Delia Farkas, Farkas, how do you pronounce her last name?
Delia Farkason?
Yeah, they 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 are actually the, um, two leading for city council, um, again, I haven't checked, but. Uh, Richard Thomas and Maureen are going back and forth for the, for the number one spot, but you know, and and it's not gonna be a resp- of all of Mount Vernon, but. For the people that, you know, read us and for our community, I'm trying something different and I'm trying to get our people, so everybody in Mount Vernon, go to the poll on Mount. On Black Westchester and vote, nobody knows. Right, 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 nobody, nobody, it doesn't, it doesn't show who you voted for, you can only vote once, you know what I'm saying, so don't come back again and try to vote again. You know what I'm saying, so, you know what I'm saying, cause I've had a few people already, I've caught them, trying to, you know. Cause they asked too many questions and I was like, no, 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 you can only vote once, I'm like, what if I go to another server? You can only vote once, so anyway, um, with that said, um, yeah, a lot going on, make sure y'all read the blackwestchester.com news with the black point of view. Um, until next week, I think, I think that's it, um, peace.
Peace and love.
There will be no highlights on the eleven o'clock news and no pictures of Harry, our woman liberationist, and Jackie Onassis blowing her nose. The theme song will not be written by Jim Webb or Francis Scott Key, nor sung by Glenn Campbell, Tom Jones, Johnny Cash, Engelbert Humperdinck, or the rare earth. The revolution will not be televised. The revolution will not be right back after a message about a white tornado, white lightning, or white people, you will not have to worry about a dump in your bedroom.